Who knows who's listening?
You're never doing private work in a job.
Absolutely not.
Google Earth or something.
Well, wait a few more minutes, see whether another member two shows up.
Sure, I think it would be smart to do, to see if we get five anyway.
Hear from anybody, Maureen, no?
Just John.
We've arrived, we'll call a meeting to order. We have before us this evening case number 907. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectman's meeting room at the town hall, 16 Lowell Street in Reading, Massachusetts on Thursday, May 21st, 2009, at 7:00 PM on the petition of Anthony and Elizabeth Dorezzo who seek a variance/special permit under table 5.1.2 and section 6311.1 of the zoning bylaws in order to construct an addition approximately 45 feet by 28 feet and two stories in height on the property located at 130 John Street, excuse me, in Reading, Massachusetts. The proposed addition encroaches on the front setback requirement of 20 feet and also exceeds the lot coverage requirement of 25 percent. This property is located in an S-15 residential district. Unless there is objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutis list except to say that the abutis were notified as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Police Department, Building Permit, Health Department, Engineering Division, Town Clerk, Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Assessors Office, CBDC, and members and associate members of the Board of Appeals all of the town of Reading, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, North Reading, Woburn, Linfield, Stone, and Wilmington. Now, testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. So, excuse me, everybody who wishes to speak or thinks they might, I mean, you don't have to, but if you think you want to. Yes, okay, fine. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, the response as I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Tony, you have the floor.
Paul.
Yeah.
Before, you might want to explain to him now that we have just four, that if we go to a vote, then what the chances are, you know, what he needs for his, a majority vote, not a majority vote, a variance versus a special permit too.
Okay, good point.
We have four of us here tonight, it's a little different than if we had the full board right now.
Yeah, what happens is this, we have, it's a five-member board with two associates. Should a member not be here, then one of the associates would sit in to have the full quarter of five. Now, a quorum to conduct a meeting is only three out of the five, and indeed, we have the three. Now, whether it is for a special permit or a variance by member of a five-member board, four members must vote in the affirmative. Now, at the present time, you are going for, I believe, a special permit. You've left it open for a variance, but the section that you referenced, Tony, of course, calls for a special permit. So, but it doesn't matter, it would be four votes in either case. Now, you have the option of continuing, requesting a continuance for another meeting when there will be five here, or proceeding with the four, and I would say presuming and continuing through and presuming your evaluation of the board's views, if you will. If you think it is favorable and you might continue, if you think for some reason that it may not be, then certainly you might want to request a continuance later on. Now, if you ask for a continuance, any of the other three members to an associate who are not here can bring themselves up to speed on what transpired of the evening by watching the video, if you will, of the meeting. So with that, I would ask what your, what do your pleasure is?
And Paul, maybe, before, just to give you one more option, we have a few members who oftentimes show up five or 10 minutes late.
Right.
We do have some other business, maybe, that we can attend to, if you want to wait a minute.
Well, the truth of the matter is, we don't.
I think we have.
No, we don't, sad to say.
Wait a minute.
But I would say, I would say this, it is likely, I have heard from John Gerima, who is in the Chelsea School Department, and I believe he said to me that it's possible he might not make the meeting. But I've not heard anything from either Peter Tedesco or Jeff Parkin, so they may very well show up later. But as I say, at any point, if you feel that you wish, you can ask to be continued.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to continue.
Great, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much. I am Tony Dorezzo, owner of 130 John Street. I'm here tonight with the project's architect, Phil Tebow. Basically, what I'm looking to do is put an addition on the house mitigating the impact of the recent development in the industrial zone upon myself and my family by creating a buffer between my living area and the industrial zone. I'm proposing to create an addition along the western edge, John Street side of the property, long enough to block a significant portion of the industrial zone. This addition will result in all of the south-facing or Lakeview Ave side windows on both the first and second floors either being removed or the view of the industrial zone being blocked. The window in my daughter's second-floor bedroom will be removed to allow access to the addition on the second floor. The windows in the current dining room will be removed. The windows in the kitchen and the living room will end up overlooking the addition as opposed to the industrial area. To be accomplished this, the addition needs to be stretched as close to the southern lot line as possible. Let us start with the special permit required because of the setback in the front. I do not believe that a special permit is required in this situation, though at the recommendation of the building inspector, I have applied for one, in case that the board disagrees with my reading of the zoning bylaws. Section 6.311.1 states that a one-family or two-family dwelling in existing nonconforming one-family or two-family dwelling or structures accessory thereto which is nonconforming with respect to a minimum setback may be enlarged or extended in any other direction in compliance with this bylaw by the issuance of a building permit. Now, the board is of the assumption and the building inspector that a 14-foot setback on John Street does not meet the 20-foot requirement according to table 5.1. However, section 5.2.3.1 in all residence districts, irrespective of the requirements of paragraph 5.1.2, the required front yard for any building other than an apartment need not be more than the greater of 10 feet or the average of the setbacks of the building on adjacent lots on either side. If an adjacent lot is vacant, it shall be considered and occupied by a building with a front yard in accordance with this paragraph.
Tony, once again, give me that reference once more if you would.
5.2.3.1.
5, 2, 3, 1?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. As you can see by the plot plan, there is only one lot on the side of this, of my lot, and that would be 128 John Street. The other side of the lot happens to have a private way, Lakeview Ave. 128 John Street has a front setback of 9.3 feet. That means the required setback for my lot should be 10 feet. We have a 14-foot setback proposed on the addition, which should meet the requirements.
Can I just invite your attention?
Why don't you get to the average? Why don't you take, you only have one neighbor, and that's 9.3 feet.
Correct.
On the vacant, on the, on the spot next to you, you're assuming nothing, or you're assuming 20 foot?
I'm assuming nothing because it's not a lot. It's a lot on either side, adjacent to the property.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely silent as to if you have no lot, based on the, I mean, let's talk about this just for a second, because this does make a difference in your application.
Absolutely.
I mean, I would see the fact that the, they put in here, if the lot is vacant, you assume 20 feet.
Yes.
I read that the intent to be, all things being equal, if you've got nothing to measure it by on one side, you go with 20 feet on that side, in which case that would give you 29.3 feet, half of that would be 14.5. So you're remarkably close to that, but you look a little bit, little, little short there, but interesting.
And henceforth, I'm applying for the special permit. Either the board agrees that the setback should be 10 feet, or they agree it's 14.5 and I would need a special permit for the encroaching.
Any thought to moving your, I mean, if you moved it a couple inches, if you had a 15-foot setback, I think you'd be.
I would leave that to the architect, whether that can be done easily or not. I think it possibly could be.
At first blush, it probably could be, move back the six inches. Of course, I would preface that, that it's always at first blush, and as you're moving things around inside, it always seems to affect something else, but at first blush, it certainly, it looks like it could be.
Again, which part of 5, 2, 3, 5, 2, 3, 2?
21.
21. Okay, go ahead.
That's it for the special permit, I believe. So now the variance, I believe, are.
Before we go there. We really should talk through what is applicable here.
Absolutely.
Because that's the thing, we have to move on to other things.
Right.
I don't think I've seen someone come before with 5, 2, 3, 1 before, but it's an interesting.
Absolutely, I've, I've been on the board a number of years, and I've, I've not seen it right into play at all.
Certainly, I don't even, I don't know what the intent was when they, they, well, I guess I can see what the intent is. Obviously, if there was a number of houses in a row that are 10 feet off the property line, there's no need to make somebody build it 20 feet off or something.
Did he give you any, did you discuss this with Glenn?
Yes.
What was his, is Glenn coming, is he in the building doing, Maureen?
I would doubt it. He's.
We would doubt.
He would be here, I think, if he weren't in the building.
One of Glenn's concerns was the proof that the neighboring lot was 9.3 feet. Because there's nothing on the plot plan to show what the setback is.
And you have something?
Do you have that? Yeah?
I have a certified copy of the decision from this board when that property went before the board for reconstruction after fire. And in that decision, it states that the front yard setback is 9.3 feet.
That's the house to your left as we face your house, Tony, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Second character.
Okay, that's right, no, I thought to give. 9.3, right, right, okay.
The house, yeah. House, house to the left is 9.2 feet.
Let me ask you this, the board can correct me if I'm, if I'm going off the deep end. You could and are asking for a special permit under 6311.1, correct?
Correct.
John, did you want to see that?
Yeah.
Now, where I'm headed to, the requirements for meeting the special permit, I would think, would be less than that for a variance. Therefore, I think it's to your advantage to proceed under the special permit first.
Okay.
Would the board agree?
I, I think, looking, looking ahead, you give them a special permit for that, and I believe we're going to have to visit it for a variance because of the site coverage.
Yes, that is correct. You're just talking about the setback, I'm just talking about the setback.
To my way, you know, and just thinking ahead a little bit, when I was reviewing it, it would seem the thing to do is maybe just do a variance for, for everything, but, you know, it's certainly, that's up to the applicant or the petition.
Well, let me again, play devil's advocate a little bit further. Again, I keep coming back to the specific four legal requirements for a variance, which in principle, again, to the lawyers and so forth, are much more specific than for the special permit.
Correct.
Correct. If you are looking for, what, 26 percent, I think, did we say?
28.
Oh, you're looking for 28.1. Could you reduce that to the 25 and do away with the request, the need for the variance?
If we were to do away with the lot coverage?
Another, reduce the lot coverage in some, in some fashion, now so that you meet the 25 percent.
We could reduce the lot coverage. The problem there is that one of the goals here is to block as much of the industrial zone as possible. To do so, we need to stretch the building out to as close to Lakeview Ave as possible. The further in you go, the less buffering, basically.
I agree. And then, and then, again, I'm just tossing comments out. For the variance, you are going to have to, as you well know, I'm sure, Tony, talk about the, the lot and the hardship and the so forth.
Yeah.
Particularly the lot itself. So again, I, I just tossed the question out. How do you want to pursue the, the variance, but just for 3 percent of lot coverage?
It's my understanding, the board granted the special permit and still denied the variance, which would allow me to reconfigure the project so that it fits within a special permit application, correct?
Correct.
So, right now, playing devil's advocate, the downside here is I'd have to reduce the lot coverage anyhow, if I don't get the variance.
But if you do, if you reduce the lot coverage, you don't have to worry about the variance.
Correct.
Your question is raised on the, on the special, the need for the special permit to begin with, Tony, and I'm sorry to say that we don't have the building inspector here, because I, this is a case where clearly is input, is of prime importance to this case. And, you know, if you were here, we could perhaps tie it up.
I, I think I see, see what the applicant is getting to, that the, you know, if he gets a special permit and then goes to the variance and that's denied, well, then he can go back and reconfigure it and come back in under, wholly under the special permit.
Another term.
I don't know if that's the case. And the reason I say it, the special permit is issued based on a specific plan.
Yes.
Then we go to a variance and deny it based on the same plan, case closed, that's what you were here for. Now you would have to re, I think you would have to reapply, correct me if I'm wrong, because it seems like it would make sense that you would have to reapply and come in with a whole new case then.
Possibly, or.
Yeah.
Or depending upon what we determine the setback requirement is tonight, I may not even have to reapply for a special permit.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah.
But, but I can tell you, because these are so intertwined, I'd be very reluctant, and the idea here is that when, when a relief is granted, you walk out of here with a stamped certified plot plan that shows exactly where the dimensions are of the footprint. We're going to be hard pressed to approve anything this evening with this plot plan unless everything you ask for is, is, is granted. Because right now, the way you have this laid out, it would be hard to grant a special permit just with respect to the front setback, and then what, approve this plot plan? Well, if we don't approve the 28 percent, this plot plan is not going to be an accurate depiction of what you're going to do. So I think that, it's all kind of tied together, and I, I don't think it's as simple as, okay, we blessed this, and then you come back with another proposal and we'll do some.
But if I, but if I have to go back and reduce the percentage of coverage anyhow, preparing to get the variance, depending upon, as I said, what the determination is on the setback, be it 10 feet or 15 feet, I could probably, at the same time, on first blush, set the setback to 15 feet, and I wouldn't need a special permit or variance. I would prefer to get the variance. Also, you might want to double-check section 6.2.3.11. Is that the one?
6, 2, 3, 11.
Sorry, 6, 3, 11.1.
11.1, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe that there is one other line that the gentlemen are missing here, which says that no other, no other what?
No such increase shall create a non-conformity?
Exactly.
And that's what you're doing with the 28 percent.
Right. Therefore, I would actually need a variance, period. The special permit wouldn't, the special permit wouldn't even be valid at this point.
Well, I think that's what Paul was addressing, is that with your lot coverage, you, you don't fall under, you're not adherent to 6311.1.
Correct.
Right. So I think before we venture down a lot of these roads, I think Paul is just trying to provide a little bit of guidance on what may or may not fit into this.
I understand. There, that's one of the reasons why I'm going against 5.3.2.1.
Right.
Once we determine what the setback is, then we can proceed, and if I, if I do not get the variance, at least now I know what the setback requires, and I can build whatever with just a.
If the variance now is denied, you came from back for another variance, for what, two years?
Correct.
Correct. But the variance would have to be on lot coverage. I cannot come back for a variance on lot coverage for two years.
Right. If I'm not, my take on this whole thing, basically, that's, that's the only reason he needs the variance, because of the lot coverage, I believe. Other than that, I think he.
Well, we need to.
Could come in under 6311, he, is what he's surmising, I believe.
Actually, not, sir.
No?
6311 would not apply because it creates a new nonconformity, the lot coverage.
Well, you're not. That's what he said. That's what, that's what precludes you from applying 6311.
That's what precludes, precludes you, right, exactly. Now, if you had 25 percent or less lot coverage with these dimensions, I don't believe you would need the variance. You would be in probably just applying for a special permit under 6311.
Yes, either a special permit or a reading on 5321 that says the setback is.
Right.
Yeah, we're not real big on findings in this.
So we've been told. Right. Quick question, and when I was looking at your plans, maybe your architect can answer it, or maybe you can, how, I, I saw the, the width of the garage is 28 feet.
That's correct.
What is the depth of the garage?
I believe it's 22 feet.
22 feet. Okay.
It's, it's pretty tight for.
That's, that's, yeah, I was going to say, yeah, even if you were to cut that back down a little bit.
The dimensions started getting fairly tight for program requirements.
Today's cars, you might be able to do it if you had a, they're a little smaller than they were back in the seventies.
He's got two kids, so he needs the, the additional room for the, for the larger cars.
Right. Right, okay.
Well, Paul, do you want to let him proceed with the variance? I mean, it, you know, do you want to put all your cards on the table and at least give the variance arguments and?
Well, he, he can, and he, he can do whichever he wishes. My comment is that I think there are enough gray areas here, particularly without any kind of, he has raised a question which clearly I was not aware of, having read over the material. 5, 5, 2, 3, 2, 5, 2, 3, 1 was not referenced at all in the, in the petition, and therefore I, I, you've got a point, Tony, I want to admit. Therefore, something has come up for which we cannot get an opinion, clearly. And with a question now of whether you could reduce it, whether the setback, but you don't even, if you reduce it, don't even need to come before the board at all, I wonder whether it is to your advantage to continue.
Might we have a short, short recess?
Yeah, by all means.
Thank you.
He raises, he raises a point.
Can't discuss it if it is a recess.
I merely said he has a point, yeah, but I'll.
I think that Glenn might not be around June 4th.
Pardon?
I think that Glenn might not be around June 4th.
Does he?
I'm not positive, but I see.
This does not bear upon this case, therefore, I think it can be, can be brought up, and we are in open session. If that's the case, Maureen, do, and I know the, the June 4th has been advertised, but does the board have the ability to re, to schedule meetings, say, when Glenn would be available? I mean, vacation is very legit.
As you know, he's not required to come to the zoning board meetings, I mean, I don't know.
That's a separate issue I would take up if I felt that I wanted to pursue, quite honestly.
I don't know, I can't.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, try to work around his schedule. We've had a number of occasions where it is beneficial, had he been here, and within reason. I wonder whether we could work with his schedule. You know, instead of being the, what is it, the second and the third, or first and third, whatever, we make it a different Thursday.
I would say probably no.
Probably no, all right.
Do you want me to go check on the 4th?
Yeah, would you do that?
I can tell you.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Should I?
I mean, hey, he's entitled to his vacation, no question.
I think we're going to meet no matter what, and.
Yeah, because they've been.
He's not here, he's not here. Period, you just deal with it.
Well, I know that.
Yeah.
So I'll stay.
That's my feeling, but.
What, what's, what's been the discussion?
The chairman would like you to check.
What's been the follow-up with, with his attendance?
Pardon?
What's been the follow-up? Is it, is, he's not required to attend, is he, I don't intend.
I have, formally, I have not raised the question.
But it was raised last year, with Carol.
Yeah, I know that.
I mean, just from, you know, of course, I'm not.
Yeah, sure.
You know, I'm not the definitive answer on anything, but I think the understanding is that, that it's, it's not an official requirement.
Yeah, I think.
Sure.
Could requests be made to him on certain cases if he saw something that looked like it could be potentially?
And is that for budgetary concerns?
No, 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 no.
John?
It's got nothing to do with budgetary concerns.
I have repeatedly raised the question about the lack of formal technical support. It's the only board I've ever been on that I remember.
It's not a requirement.
We've not had technical support. We've not had technical support for our town. And I think the reason is that it's presumed not needed.
But you have to ask Carol then.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
I think also, with the complexity of the issues facing the board in the 21st century, things that we just heard this evening, it is almost imperative that somebody be here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a glutton for punishment, I'd like to proceed.
Okay, great, all right.
All right, so we're tabling the special permit at this point in time? Or are we going to try and make a determination of a special permit? Or at least see setback?
Well, I for one, I for one would like to have heard, or like to hear, the, the building inspector's interpretation with the information that you have just given. And in the absence of that this evening, uh, if the, if you take the variance route, then you're talking both of them at the same time, and presumably, issue of a variance can take care of the whole issue.
Correct.
And if that were not the case, it might be necessary, or it might be desirable, to continue it to get this question of the frontage resolved. So if you want to proceed with the variance, I certainly have no objection to that. The board? Okay. All right.
All right, uh, for the variance, there are four criteria that need to be met. The first criteria, owing to circumstances relating to the soil, conditions, shape, topography, or such of land structure. Land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Uh, as I said previously, this property is located on the edge of the industrial zoning district, uh, with no buffering in between. There's no trees, no hills, no significant distance. Uh, looking out from my kitchen, I see a 280,000 square foot shopping plaza with a freestanding 150-foot square foot sign, a 70,000 square foot supermarket, a 3,000 square foot bank, a Hallmark Health building, Bertucci's, a Longhorn. Second, the lot has been in existence since the 1920s, well before zoning was established in the town of Redding. Uh, the property was originally two lots, each approximately 4,900 square feet. The current building is entirely situated on one of the original lots. The house had a side yard setback between 130 and 128 John Street of 7.3 feet. It should be noted that the addition will not encroach upon this side setback. Had the side setbacks been the required 15 feet for the S15 district, the addition would not need to be as long to reach the same position on the lot. Uh, the property abuts a private way, Lakeview Ave., with the fee in soil of one half of the private way joining the premises, and a right of the way over the other half divot. The town has closed off John Street, where it meets Lakeview Ave. This has eliminated approximately 35 feet of frontage along John Street. There's still 100 feet of frontage along Lakeview Ave. This is forcing me to access the garage via Lakeview Ave instead of John Street. Uh, the second criteria, a little enforcement of provision of the ordinance or the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, the petition or app. Uh, a little enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would prevent the creation of a buffer between my living area and the industrial adjacent, uh, the adjacent industrial zoning district. Such a buffer would help to minimize the impact from the lighting, signage, noise, from the recent construction in the industrial district. As designed, the cost of the addition is offset by the increase in property value through the addition of the fourth bedroom and master suite. Otherwise, the increased value of the house will be less than the cost of the addition. The third criteria, that desirable leave may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Adding this buffer between the residential district and the industrial district is a positive for the public itself. Such a buffer will not only benefit myself, but also several of the neighboring homes. And finally, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose, purpose of such an ordinance or bylaw, the intent of the 25% lot coverage limit is to ensure that construction is appropriately scaled and massed for the neighborhood. Whereas this property abuts not only several single-family residences, but also a 3,000 square foot van, 270,000 square foot supermarkets, several apartment buildings, I think the scale is appropriate. Also, if this lot were 15,000 square foot, as required by the S15 zoning district, the lot coverage would only be 18.4%. So the house really is not a extremely large, comparatively speaking, for the neighborhood. I believe those are my points for the zoning district, for the variance.
Okay. Any further questions by the board?
How long, how long have you owned, owned the home?
About 15 years, sir.
And was that, uh, you, were you aware that that was an industrial zoning district right beside you when you purchased it?
Yes, I did. What I was not aware of was the amount of variances that would be granted to the industrial zone.
Variances.
Well, there was a variance for the General Way sign, there was a variance for 11 signs, Stop and Stop, there was a variance for the setbacks of the bank, there was a variance for Hallmark Health for the location of the signs and the number of signs. There was a variance for the Bertucci's, a variance for the Longhorn.
That's correct.
Tony, again, when did you buy the house?
1995. At that point, you basically had, uh, General Way with Fruel Fannies, which opened on the weekend only and was, uh, closed at 5:00. 25 Walker's Brook, which is today the Stop and Shop, was actually a, a office building-
Right.
With nothing but the back facing the residential district.
But first, remember, it was, when did Jordan's go in?
I believe that was about 2004.
Yes, I was going to say it went in before that. So it was there.
Yes.
As a PUD, not a zoning board.
Well, yeah, I understand. Go ahead.
I, I don't have any questions for petition. I do have a few comments. I, I think, quite frankly, that, that criteria 1, 2, and 4 don't come close to meeting the standard. Uh, I, I haven't heard anything regarding the uniqueness of the shape, soil condition, or topography, the fact that it's a, a lot that predates zoning, the fact that it's on the edge of a, another district, the fact that it formerly was two lots. Interesting facts, give some context, I don't think relevant to, to, um, meeting the first criteria.
What about the fact that the John Street has been closed off by the town? Originally, John Street actually fit across the full 100 feet of the lot. The town has closed off 35 feet of it, which means that now, if I do put up a garage, I have to access it through Lakeview Ave. That would be a unique condition for this lot.
Not, doesn't it affect the other residents on John Street?
No, it does not, because John Street still is straight across all of their front yards.
Turns just before your house?
Turns just before my house.
Okay, that is somewhat unique.
And that was created by the town?
Yes.
That, that's fine. Let's, let's look at the, let's look at the second criteria. Maybe you can expound a little bit on what you have in there. Talk about that, by not permitting this, you'd be prevented from creating a buffer.
Yes.
Which, again, it's certainly logical, um, but I'm not sure why that creates a hardship in that there, there's no entitlement to a buffer. The buffers are created in the zoning bylaws through setbacks. So, you know, and you're situated in a particular place where you don't have a huge setback, and you happen to be near an industrial area, but I'm not sure why that now is hardship. It doesn't, it doesn't allow you a perk, but I'm not sure that creates a hardship. How, how does that-
Well, there are other issues of buffer besides setback. For example, the limitation of a sign size at 75 square feet, whereby a variance has been granted for a General Way at 150 square feet. That basically puts the sign twice as close to my property as really it should be, at least visually. Also, setbacks for the bank should have been approximately 100 feet, and I think they're about 67. They specifically set up these setbacks to protect the, uh, the residential districts. However, in this case, many of those have been, uh, aggregated through variances.
Does that logic then create a domino effect, that every property that is next to a property that received a variance now is entitled to their own variance to offset that? And in fact, these should be looked at, and as I understand mass general laws, you look at these properties uniquely. Every time you apply the criteria, it's not just because the neighbor's got it. Now, there may be precedential value, but just because the neighbor's got it doesn't suddenly create a hardship for you. That's the time during, during analysis of their four criteria, when they come before the board, is when these issues get raised. And I know they have been, I know you've been present for those. But I just, I'm, I'm worried about, you know, the argument that they've got it down the road here, so I, of course, need it, and then your neighbor will apply and say, well, Tony got it, he put this big house there because he got a variance. I need now a bigger house too, to offset his large house and his variance.
And you are correct that a domino effect could be created. The problem with that is, the domino effect, the ball has already started to roll. The variances have already been granted, they've already offset the buffering. Therefore, imagine, if you will, if a variance is graded for, say, height of a, a building, and now the next building has to be at least as high or the next one. And you're going to end up with a domino effect. Unfortunately, the domino effect needs to stop at the beginning, not in the middle.
You know, it's certainly a fair point. I, I, again, I'm not sure it meets criteria. It meets the logic argument that you're, you should have a nice, uh, buffer, you've got an industrial area with a lot of commercial properties with signs and lighting and noise. Um, but let's go through it a little bit further.
All right.
Um, let's move past third. I think there's, there's a fair argument you've presented there. In number four, where you talk about, um, well, first of all, you give a hypothetical, which I'm not sure is, is, is helpful to the argument that the fourth criteria is met. If your property was larger, then this would be proportionally okay. But, but it's not. If you had a 5,000 square foot property, 25% would be a very small house. That's what you've got. So I mean, you've got what you've got. I don't think we can make that. But the proportionality argument, uh, talk me through that. What is the, what is the size that this house will be, assuming the, the proposal is, is granted, compared to your neighbors, your residential neighbors? What's the proportion?
The residential neighbors, it will probably be about 50 to 67% larger.
Okay.
So, there's that. But, a neighborhood is not just made up of one set, one area. You can't just point in one direction. Neighborhood actually cir, uh, surrounds a property. And the goal of 25 percentage, at least my understanding, was to prevent extremely large McMansions from being built next to small capes. Uh, in this case, we're not looking to build a huge McMansion. It's, granted, it is greater than the 25%, but it's not extremely large, and for the area, it's not excessively large. That's the best I can explain it. The reason I use the hypothetical is because even though many of the lots surrounding it are 5,000 square feet, it's not necessarily that they are at 25% coverage. I believe the zoning board, uh, not, sorry, the CVDC did a survey last year and found, was it 30% of the properties in town did not meet the coverage requirement? And that's because what the goal of the zoning had been was to minimize future building by creating the large lot sizes that were larger, basically, than most of the properties in the area. 15,000 square feet, I don't think there's one within half a mile of my house, at this point. Even though the entire district is designed to be S15. So the goal there was more to prevent future building than it was to prevent house size.
What is your total square footage, assuming the proposal? What does it come out to be? I'm, I'm sorry?
2,700.
2,700?
2,744. And there's no convenient way you can drop that back 3.1%.
There are possibilities. My first goal is to try and create as much of a buffer as possible. There are ways of dropping it down some more. I don't know if we can reach the 25 with the base plan that we have here. There are some things that we could do, uh, that we could make the deck a bit smaller. As you'll see off the original house, there's a 12-foot deck. We could make that smaller. We're looking at basically roughly 300 square feet differential between the 25 and the 28% here.
Yeah.
You know, when I, when I read the, certainly, Tony, the four criteria there, maybe, I, I, I had a problem with number one. Two, three, and four, I look at two as saying, you know, as, as being an owner next to that industrial area and knowing what Walker's Drive has gone through, I think you've suffered, personally, I think you've suffered hardship in the past, up to this point, and I, I think you're trying to alleviate that now, and I, I can certainly see a hardship argument there. In three and four, I, I don't see, uh, I, I don't think there would be a substantial detriment to the public good with what you have there, especially looking at the neighborhood. And number four, would it substantially degrade from the intent or purpose of the bylaw? And I don't believe it particularly would in this instance, uh, knowing the neighborhood, knowing the lots here. Uh, obviously, the lots to the north of you are smaller lots, and, uh, the houses, I would suspect, like on your most nor, you know, your rebutting lot there on John Street, I would suspect that that is probably greater than 25% coverage on that house, because it is a 49, what is it, a 4,900 square foot lot. It's, it's had basically half a yard, and I know what they did. You know, when some sub-development did this back in the 1900s, 1920, whenever, they went in and laid out these lots in approximately 50-foot by 100-foot lots.
Correct.
And then sold them to people, uh, with the option of you could buy one lot, two lots. If you wanted to, you could have bought three lots and put them together, and you would have done that. Obviously, the people to the north of you have the single lots, you have a double lot, uh, on it. And yet, the existing houses, when I say existing, to the way they exist today, are approximately the same size, I, I think, on all of them.
Well, if it helps the board, my current house on the individual lot would be 32% coverage.
That would be 30, okay, and I would suspect that would be pretty, uh, much the same with your neighbors, too, 30, around that, you know. Uh, is with Clark, and number one is always the one we have wrestle with, and I think, you know, people sometimes come in and they, they use the uniqueness of the lot, and it really isn't that. It, it has to do with the shape of the lot, if it's, if it's an odd shape for some particular reason, or if it's soil conditions or topog, uh, topography, and that's specifically what it states, soil conditions, shape, or topography. Obviously, you have a, a rectangular lot. I, I don't see it's a unique shape. Uh, soil conditions, I don't think you have any unique soil conditions from anybody else in your neighborhood, or rebutting, or anything else. Or the topography isn't any more unique. And, and that's the one I'm wrestling with, and it's, uh, you know, number one.
What is your definition of topography?
Topography?
Elevation.
It's, it's a differential in elevation, uh, in the surface of the, of the land.
Could it be location? Pardon? Could it be also location?
That's geographic, then. That's not topograph.
Topographic relief is, you know, differences in elevation, et cetera, so in other words, uh, if you had one end of your lot was 20 foot higher than the other end of your lot or something, and it was a 50-foot difference in length, you'd have a steep lot. That, that certainly is a unique topography. Uh, but it's, it's generally relatively flat out there. I, I know, basically, your argument is that it's, it's next to an industrial area. I don't know if that's, you know, it's not unique. Your neighbor across the street's next to an industrial na, uh, area. Your neighbor on Lakeview, next to an industrial area, so it's, it's really not unique, uh, in that respect. Uh, and that, that's the one I'm having a hard time wrestling with. The other question, and, and I kind of wish, and I know, maybe you touched upon this with Glenn, too. Obviously, you're in the S15, a frontage setback, which is 20 feet.
Yes.
Okay? And I'm looking Lakeview, which is a private way.
Yes.
And I believe Glenn has looked at it before, and this is, again, a corner lot is a little unique in that a corner lot has two frontages. You have frontage on Lakeview, you have frontage on John Street, and yet you have 18.2 feet off of Lakeview, not at 20 feet. Now, that's, I was just wondering if you would discuss that with Glenn?
Uh, I had discussed it with Glenn. Glenn didn't have a problem with the side setback, because while you're saying it is frontage, there's a specific to a front yard, a side yard, and a rear yard. It is not a frontage setback so much as it is a front yard setback. So depending upon the positioning of your home, that would determine what your setback should be.
Well, I think we've run into this in the past, and I, I begged and, I think Glenn would argue with you, Juan. That somebody who has a- would argue with you, Juan, that somebody who has a corner lot, it's required to have the setback off of the street at 20 feet, both sides.
I would refer back to the building inspector's letter. If you notice, the SBA request only referred to the front setback being inadequate, not the side. So I don't believe the building inspector had any problems with a side setback of 18 feet.
Okay, if I could cross another comment out on question one. I see it perhaps a little bit differently.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm just saying that I think that his comment there is taken. I note, it goes on, and it says, "But which do not affect generally the zoning district in which the land or structure is located." Therefore, I would say, location itself could be a consideration, though not every lot abuts the divider between zoning districts. And I think in this case here, he raises a point whereby, with Lakeview there, that's an open street, he is facing directly across the street and to his side.
But isn't that just a limiting instruction, that you shouldn't be comparing the uniqueness of his lot to the zoning district next door? It should be compared to the, his zoning district. I think that's where the location comes in, not the uniqueness of the location of the property.
What I'm saying is, I think his, his location, his location, provides a unique situation by virtue of the fact that he does indeed face non-residential areas, both to his front and to his side.
And how, again, does that relate to the soil conditions, shape, or topography?
Well, it doesn't relate to the soil conditions or the topography. I'm saying the location. The, his is unique location, as opposed to houses further into the district. I just offer that as a thought.
It is, I think, Paul, but as I pointed out, I don't think it's any more unique than the abutting property across the street, or the abutting property, one house up on Lakeview, or two houses up on Lakeview, all along there, they abut that zoning district. So it's, and I think if you read one fully, it says, "The soil conditions, shape, and topography which especially affect the land or the structure in question." That lot, the particular lot we're targeting, lot.
That's right, that's what I'm talking about. I'm saying the location.
Which does not generally, but which does not generally affect the zoning district in which the land or structure is located. That would substantiate. So in other words, it's soil conditions, shape, and topography that's particularly unique to the lot in question, that generally doesn't affect anybody else or in that zoning district, or in that neighborhood, you might say, I think. Whereas, the argument on that it abuts an industrial zone, I look at, the lot across the street abuts the industrial zone, the lot here abuts industrial zone, the lot at Lakeview abuts it.
No. Well, yeah, further up Lakeview.
Right.
Yeah, but not coming back this way, Bob.
No, I didn't say that. I said across John Street, over here.
Yeah, that property right there.
Yeah, I agree. Here's his property. You got this property here, that abuts the zone, and you got this one, this one.
We're not talking about those lots this evening.
Right, but we're saying they're in a similar situation, which means that this is not unique.
He's not unique because there's other lots in the zoning district that have his same situation.
That is a point. That's a point.
And that's, that's where I was saying, I'm having a hard time with criteria one on that. And, and that's why, you know, the variance is certainly a lot more different, and that's why I say, and basically, the only thing we're discussing in regards to the variance is because of the site coverage. Now, if we were sitting here just talking about a special permit, we're not even discussing these criteria.
Why I raised the questions initially.
Yeah, that's exactly, and I think the, I think the petition knows the situation he is in.
I have attended many of these meetings.
Right.
But if I can throw yet another fly into the ointment, the actual code is, owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, how do topography and soil conditions affect the structure?
Well, if you're asking for a variance to locate a structure, because you have ledge that covers 50% of your lot, and so you want to move that structure.
Not a condition of the structure. It sounds to me as though there is a ability in the variance bylaw, that if you have an existing structure, and it would be prohibitive to tear it down, to do something else, that because of the existing structure, you may be allowed a variance. Much like we use an SBA, a special permit, to allow an extension within, you could also be doing that through a variance.
Well, that's, I suppose, possible. We'd have to see that particular case. I look at it as, right now, at least in the town of Reading, if you're talking an existing structure, and something catastrophic happened, it burned down, and that was a non-conforming structure before because of something on the lot, you could rebuild in that same location by right, or you could come to us for a special permit under particular sections, if you wanted to even increase it a little bit and not increase the non-conformity of what you had there before.
What I read that say is that if you, and I apologize for the hypothetical, it's likely to stop supplement, I certainly will, if you had, say, a house that did not meet a minimum setback, and you wanted to make an addition or whatever, within that minimum setback, it allows you a variance for towns that do not have a special permit process. It may be that I need a variance to put a doorway off of my front porch, because I need a ramble, whatever. So a town without a special permit, the uniqueness of that situation would be the structure and not just the lot.
Right.
But I think that's further defined by saying the uniqueness of the shape of the structure, if we want to really parse this out. And, I mean, to me, they've obviously tried to make it as broad as possible. I envision something where you have some unique structure, it's a curved building type, and to put an addition on there, you really can't do it because it really has an unreplicated shape. I mean, it specifically says shape. I think 99% of the time, that piece is not applicable. A unique structure, I don't, most people have fairly, fairly standard structures, but I think that, that's what they, if we want to parse that. Again, it's not the location, it doesn't say the unique location of the structure. So is there something about the structure that you have, the shape of it, that's unique and different from everything else, from your butters or your?
Well, I don't know about so much the uniqueness. However, part of the location of the addition is based on the access point from the house. To move the structure forward or back or whatever would be taking out, right now, we've got the best spot being, basically removing my daughter's bedroom. The room before that is the bathroom, and after that becomes the kitchen, which is only one-story. So what we've done is, we've made that addition basically line up at the best point of the house for it to come out. Moving it forward takes out the bathroom or the current master bedroom. Moving it back, I don't have the second story because I've only got the kitchen.
No, it certainly makes sense where you want to put it. Again, my concern lies with that, meeting that first criteria. It's reasonable, everything you've proposed, other than, I don't think it meets the first criteria. In fact, I don't think it meets the fourth either, but we can discuss that. I mean, from a practical standpoint, have you talked with, with your engineer, if there's a way to get this to your liking, that you don't need to, to get a variance on the, on the coverage piece? I mean, I think, I won't gauge the temperature of the other board members, but I can tell you, I don't feel that you've sufficiently met the criteria. But I do think you have a very reasonable proposal that could be downsized somewhat to get you within the 25% parameter, but I don't know if that's to your liking.
Downsizing, at this point, really allows, really does not affect the, the impact of the industrial zone upon the living areas, and that's really why we're pushing for this. The more you push it back from the south-side lot, the more of the industrial zone, which you're actually still viewing.
And at 28 feet, you're already at the narrowest point. You can't go narrower than that to reduce your, the coverage there? I'm only asking, I'm not suggesting.
We could, you could go narrower, but it becomes a case of, you're looking at more, once more, you're looking at more of the industrial zone, more of the market basket sign, the stop-and-shop building, and so forth. By pushing it out, we're eliminating as much as possible of that.
Tony, that may, and you raise, certainly, and have continued to raise, a very good argument from your point of view. Notwithstanding that, though, I think what is being said is that the board must, by virtue of the statute, look at things in this light. And, as I say, and that's what, from what I'm hearing, objections or concerns are being raised, whether criteria number one is fully met.
Well, I would have thought criteria number one would be met by the actual closing of John Street, which is forcing the driveway to be off of Lakeview, as opposed to, I could virtually pull it in a little more, but I couldn't pull it in from John Street, I've got to pull it in from Lakeview. On the plug.
Many houses come in from the side street, where their garages.
You access your house now from John Street, correct?
From here.
Yes.
However, if the garage's down here, even with the coverage, I'm prohibited from it because the town blows off that portion of my property.
I don't see how that applies. You're, you're just coming in, your garage is accessing from a side street, is what you're doing.
That's his property.
Because it has to access through the side street.
That's what he wants to, right now, I believe he accesses, and I'm looking at the aerial photograph there. You, you access from John Street.
Correct.
To the, well, for the lack of, the south side of your house.
Yes.
There. And if you flipped things around, and, no, I'm just throwing some things out now, and put your garage entrance on John Street, you could access your double garage from John Street, and put your addition behind that, rather, you don't have to access from Lakeview, do you? I don't see why you have to.
Well, remember, the goal of the addition is to block as much of the industrial zone as possible. Moving the addition long way, as opposed to across John Street, negates that entire whole.
Right, right. No, I, I understand you, what you're trying to do, and I can certainly.
But you're just going to put the garage here.
Put the garage here instead of here. But I think you have to look at it as you're trying to create a buffer within the parameters of existing zoning today. I mean.
Yes.
I mean, now, which, if, a great buffer would be a 30-foot-high wall along your south property line, that'd be a great buffer, not allowed, not allowed, but.
Relocating the garage, though, doesn't, if it keeps the same size, doesn't affect the lot coverage.
Doesn't affect.
If he relocates the garage, but keeps the same, same footprint.
Oh, I, I didn't tell you.
We were talking about it.
I didn't say that.
Uniqueness argument.
I see the uniqueness.
That's what makes it unique.
No, obviously, I think if he were, if he's going to meet the 25% lot coverage criteria, he has to.
Make something small.
Condenses, yeah, he has to make something small. And I just brought up the point that, you know, maybe he doesn't have to access from Lakeview. Maybe something could be done, he could access from John Street, make the frontage there, and go back a little bit. You know, I, I know you got to fit two cars in there, that's what you're trying to do, and you're trying to create a buffer.
And there are other ways. I mean, if you look at, you have a portion of your home, and again, I'm not an engineer or an architect by any means, but you have a one and a half story, and you have a one story. Going up on those and making those two full stories, again, I know there's financial issues associated with that, but I mean, for living area, that again, would increase that without increasing your lot coverage. So there's some opportunities there. It just seems to me that, you know, three of the four members have said pretty clear.
Unfortunately, to go up over the kitchen, which is what you're referring to, would basically be getting everything and rebuilding because the walls are not designed to support it. It's a 25-foot loss, and there is no support beams in the middle.
You know, I'm, I can't play in your house all, I'm saying, just, myself, and as I gauge the rest of the board, it doesn't seem that the proposed relief of variance for the lot coverage is being favorable to you.
I would tend to agree with the applicant, that I think, you know, when you look at the architectural plans and what's proposed there is quite a substantial change to the existing structure that's there. And I would suspect that, yeah, it's a major, it's a major effort.
Do we have any, while we're mulling around among ourselves, any comments from people in the audience?
Yeah, talking area, I live across the street from Tony and Doc. I'd really like to see the board try to work with Tony on this. I think we've endured a lot in a variance for, I believe it's 3% coverage. There's been an awful lot of variances given out to our industrial neighbors that have exceeded 3% quite a bit. And I think it's commendable, especially in this day and age, just trying to improve his property, and I really hope the town will work well. I, I live, again, I live across the street, I think I can speak most of the neighbors saying it, we have no problem with him making a strong financial commitment to his property.
Any other comments? Anything further from the board?
Yeah, just to, I think, certainly, listening to us tonight, I, I think the board is trying to, to work with the applicant, and we're giving them, you know, every opportunity to maybe look at different options, et cetera, on this. And certainly, keeping him up to date in, you know, where the board sits tonight, obviously, with just four members, and I think that's the other thing you keep in mind, if, if this were voted tonight, you would need a unanimous decision to get your variance from the, all four, you'd need four years on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So.
Well, I would say this, I, as, as we talk, to me, the criteria for the variance, whether it is liked or not, there is a degree of subjectivity in every single one, sad to say, would be the case that comes through, that it is clear-cut, you know, it's sitting on a pinnacle or something or other. And I, for one, as I, I know the lot, we've seen it, I, I've heard the arguments, and I think that there is a uniqueness here by, yes, we've talked about other lots in the area, but this particular one almost sits out on a point and looks squarely at non-residential areas, I'll put it that way. And if we take a look at the criteria three and four, I don't think that is a detriment in any way because of the space where it is. The question of the desirability of the buffer being there, well, again, that's somewhat subjective. But if the intent is to try to come up with a solution, I don't think the town loses by doing this. I think, I will say this, I think it's an awfully large extension, as I look at the basic house and then this big, this big thing from your, from your elevation off to the side. So, looking at it, I would, I'm not opposed to the variance, let me put it that way, as such, but I do see all of the issues that the board talks about, I certainly do. It's, it's not, not clear-cut. Is there anything further that need be said, can be said? Are the, is the board, do we, do we feel we have all of the information that we need? We are looking at, at this point, a variance for the two conditions, the 28 versus, the 28.1 versus the required 25%. And we're also looking at the, a variance for the, for the setback, the front setback.
Which, which setback?
The 14.1. Doesn't meet the 15.
But there was a special permit. Doesn't meet the 15, where's the 15 come from?
Well, the required setback for the, for the front. Are we going by what?
20 feet. Is it not?
I beg your pardon, the 20 feet, sorry, Bob, 20 feet. Yeah, you're, I'm seeing this.
So I looked at this and.
Right.
This is what I was saying, to me, I could, I could certainly see the arguments for a special permit under 11.11, correct me, 11.3, because the setback is greater than what the setback on the existing house is. He's not creating a new non-conformity with this addition.
I certainly agree with that.
But for the.
And now, this is the first time this has been brought up, by the way.
Yeah.
I thought of that a long time ago. You're absolutely right. So I question why it's even being considered in the first place.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't considering that as part of the variance. The only thing I was, and I think I said that already at the beginning, the only thing I'm considering, or that I see, that the variance. or that I see that the variance is required for, is for the site coverage.
Okay, then let's, that is clear, then. Everybody is in agreement on that. We're talking only, fine. Is the board ready to take action? Do I have a motion?
Do we just want to remind the petitioner, if the board votes in the negative, denies the petition for a variance, you can't bring this one up again for a period of two years?
Two years for lot coverage, that is correct.
Okay, so that's, and the alternative, we have had petitioners who have either withdrawn their petition, continued it, there are other options as well.
Thank you for letting me know.
Point's well taken.
Sorry, what was that, sir?
No, I was just saying, his point is very well taken.
I understand his point. Absol.
Do you wish to proceed?
I wish to proceed.
Does the board, do I have a motion?
I think in this case, is there someone who's going to propose in the affirmative?
Oh, I think you have to propose.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, no, we don't have to, but if there's someone who's on.
I would suggest, and I think I've raised this question myself.
Always, I think it is.
Yeah, I know that, but it was also brought up, that I think it was said that it is, it is clearer for the board to move the action that they wish to take. If the motion is to deny, then move to deny. If the motion is to approve, then move to approve. Parliamentary, yes, you would move in the affirmative. But I think the question here, because I raised this up, and I think I was basically, you know, overruled at one point, that we should vote, we should move the action that the board wishes to take. Clark, you're a lawyer, what do you think?
I'm fine. I mean, it doesn't really, I think one instance we had where we've moved in the negatives where we, I think, were fairly confident it was unanimous. I don't think it helps the petitioner if you move in the negative and it's not voted. So I think in this case, if there are people who are inclined to vote in the affirmative, a motion should be made that way.
Yeah, I think we discussed that, how can you make a motion in the negative if you don't know how other people are going to vote?
So, I think it's clear here, any motion should be made.
For approval.
I think so.
Okay, anybody care to volunteer? You did the last one, John. Clark, you were one?
Well, I'm not going to move in the affirmative because that's not my, that's not my choice now. You know, writing this is.
All right, I will make the motion, then, but I would ask somebody to write it up, taking the chair's prerogative. I would move that to grant a variance for the lot coverage requirement of Table 5.1, 5.1.2. The petitioner requests 28.1 feet square percent versus the 30, the 25 percent required by Table 5.1.2. Let me just write that down. Move to grant a variance for lot coverage of 28.1 percent as noted on a plot plan of land of 130 John Street showing proposed addition writing mass prepared by benchmark survey, 38 Month Vale Avenue, dated March 17, 2009.
Mr. Chairman,
Yeah.
May I make a comment?
Yep.
Just realize something. My understanding is that the last buildable lot in a series of lots is unique and is valid for various. Is that not correct? I believe it was used on Nelson Street as the uniqueness for the variance granted to put up the house on a 9,000-square-foot lot.
I, for one, don't recall.
I can recall.
That was the support that was given, that it was the last buildable lot?
Yes, and I believe there is even court precedent for it.
But, you know, unfortunately, we're left here with the rule or the mass general law.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how, I mean, there may have been interpretations that way. I'm surprised, but interesting.
Is that motion seconded?
It's seconded.
Well, seconded. Any further discussion?
Let's move to grant the variance for lot coverage of 28.1 percent.
Correct, yeah, as noted on the plot plan, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And let the record show, it is one in the affirmative, three in the negative, and the variance is not granted. Now, is there any further action that the board feels we should take regarding the, anything else on this case? We've discussed the frontage. I think it's the board's opinion that the frontage is not an issue.
In regards to the frontage setback?
Yeah.
No, I actually read it the way the petitioner does, 5.2.3, and I think, except for a few inches, I think my average comes out. My assumption is that we would count your, the absence of a house next to you is 20 feet, and that gets you to 29.3, and you have to be at 14.7, and I think you're at 14.4. But my reading is the same as yours, though, so I don't think you're required to.
Is the current, the existing house on his lot also taken into effect into that average?
I think it just says, need not be more, greater of the average of the setbacks of the building on adjacent lots on either side. So, I mean, I would read it as you look at the house to the right and to the left.
Because his house actually sits, I think, forward of that.
7.3.
Right.
But I wouldn't take into account the house behind you. I think the intent would be to your right and left, you know, on that street. But that's an interpretation. I don't know if the board shares.
But does the denial for the variance on the structure now make that moot point, whether we?
I mean, he can amend that, modify the structure to keep the same front yard setback, but the denial of the coverage means something has to change with the proposed structure or the existing wood deck or something
Right.
on the lot has to
Right.
bring it into conformity. So I guess the option is whether or not he wants to continue the special permit piece.
Could do that. That's an option, certainly, and then come back with a modification.
Why are we continuing with a special permit? A special permit on what?
We need a new.
Well, as it stands now, he doesn't have, I mean, this plot plan is no longer good, but as it stands, he doesn't quite meet, in my reading, 5.2.3. He's darn close, and my reading is almost the same as his, but I think his existing, his proposal for 14.4 doesn't meet it. That's just my read on it.
14.1 even on the other one.
14.1.
14.1 on one one.
Good, good point. I mean, so theoretically, he could, if he rejiggers this a little bit, he might come in under 6.311 if he doesn't create a new non-conformity. Theoretically, if he rejiggers it a little bit more and comes in at 14.7, he doesn't need to come before the board again. It's provided he changes the lot coverage down to 25 percent.
Right.
So in effect, you're, we're really talking about continuing.
Or he can withdraw, but I.
Well, he can withdraw, sure, of course.
Might I make your lives easier? I would like to withdraw my petition for the special permit. How's that?
The only piece with that is that if you, if Glenn has a different reading on it, and you have to come back again, you've got to refile with new money.
Yes.
Whereas if you continue for a couple of sessions until you sort it out with Glenn, you may save yourself another five.
It isn't going to hurt you.
Might the chair suggest, Tony, that you continue?
All right, then I would like to continue.
I think so.
It isn't going to hurt. You can certainly withdraw down the line if you want to.
But now I'm going to raise another possibility. When would this come up?
Paul's leaving, I think. It's good to bring out.
That's right. When could this be heard? The question is this, quite honestly. We have, let me go back now to my, to our schedule. We have, let's see, we have a case for June 4th, we have two on June 18th already. So that unless this were continued to June 4th, it would fall very likely into July.
If it can fit by June 4th, I'm certain we will have a resolution by then.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay, so we'll continue to June 4th.
I'll be here on the 4th.
Do I need to?
I will not be here on the 4th.
John Miles, now, see, this is the problem. Then, what's happening is, you're having, yes, of course. So, of the, there are three here, and you need, we need to pick up one or both, one or two or three of those that were not here this evening. In any event, I think the smart move is to go for June 4th. It just makes it worse if you go to July.
Correct.
Well, maybe not. Okay, motion, it was, continuance to June 4th was requested.
I think we have a form.
Yeah. Tony, have you talked to Glenn about your reading of 5.2.3?
Yes.
And does he agree with that?
Ah, good, okay.
He agrees. He was also trying to include the house behind when he was doing the calculation.
Oh, interesting.
Plus wanted proof of the distance on the property.
And where does the house behind fit in? What's their offset from, what's their frontage?
Their frontage is a little weird because they actually had their lot, they used to face John Street Court, they've now moved it to facing John Street, so they're probably about 75, I would say.
Boy, that's, is that the house that's kind of in the middle of the, everybody's backyard there, huh?
Yeah, so that throws the average way up if you do count that thing.
Right.
Okay, we need somebody to write up this, this case.
I'll write up the variance.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, then you may not have agreement with the building inspector on that one, even if you.
Well, I think he was also taken by surprise when I pointed it out to him at the meeting. And without time to review it, that's what he came up with. I think between the discussions the board has had tonight, plus.
Which he's not part of, though.
No, but he can, he can check with Maureen. He can read the minutes of the meeting. See how the board intends to interpret it.
The minutes only state actions that were done, not what was said.
Capture that note.
Okay.
Well, you're on the June 4th, so if there's an issue with that, then.
All right, Tony, this is yours. Maureen, do we have any, one of the forms for a continuance?
Yes.
Would you, thanks? Tony, this is yours, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tony, I'm sure you've already pointed out to him, but if you do, that word either, either side as opposed to all sides may be helpful in making clear that.
The fact that I didn't have proof of, at that time, of the neighborhood, I figured it was best to go for a lot of special permits.
So this would be for the special permit?
Yeah, yeah. Now, with that in mind, I, we have another, another question, Maureen. We will need a, the video of this meeting for the three members who are not here. Can Peter's office get that for us?
No.
Can you get it? Okay, great. And I think what we'll need to do is to inform them. Can you do that? Do you want me to do it? How is that done?
Inform.
We'd have to inform the three members, John.
You should do that. I can help you get the DVD for them to pick up, but you should.
Okay, I think what I will.
You can come by and pick it up and swap it, whatever you decide.
I think what I will do is I will send a memo to Carol, since I cannot do this by email, and ask that the office inform the three members of the necessity to do that. Open meeting law prevents me from sending an email around telling them to do it.
It's really just procedural to just tell them. That's procedural. That's not instructing them to see the video so that they can be a voting member, I think.
Everybody in agreement? Fine, I will do that.
Would someone have to view the video for the last meeting on Lot A, South Street?
That's for the.
Pardon?
The other case that night?
Yeah.
Lot A, South Street. Was it only five of us here that night, or were there more?
I don't know, I'll have to go back to my notes.
And you're not going to be here when it comes up again?
Fourth, next.
No, he's going to. Okay.
We will have four. That's at least.
Okay, Maureen, give that back to me. So, John, you, we will plan that you will be out. I'll have to take over the pen.
No, no, it's not business.
Okay. Anything else coming before the board? Oh, by the way now, we have a motion, we have a request to, for continuance for June 4th. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yeah.
Seconded? All those in favor?
And this is solely with respect to the special permit.
Solely with respect to, yeah.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you on the 4th.
Thank you.
Okay, do it.
Motion, John?
Seconded? We have a turn.